Good evening.
And welcome to the February 27th, 2024 Stowe Select Board Meeting. Our first order of business is public comment. You have up to two minutes, and if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Linda.
Hi, I'm Linda Hathaway, the town clerk, and I'm giving you an update on early voting and vote by mail. I want to let you know that we've sent out 1,315 ballots to the people who've requested them. Today was the last day to request them to be mailed. And I want to congratulate the 600-plus that have returned them. I'm a little annoyed with the 712 who have not. So it's, you have until the end of the close of polls on March 5th to return your ballot, but I would highly recommend that you get them in earlier. And it's probably best to drop them off in the blue box out front of the front of the town building or at the clerk's office. They have to be back to our office by 8 o'clock, March 5th, in order to be counted. They cannot be dropped off at the polls. The polls on March 5th will be open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I hope to see a lot of people there. Let's see, we've had 98 people vote in person downstairs in the Whitney Room, and we still have more time to do that. We have tomorrow, 8:30 to 4:00, Thursday, 8:30 to 7:00. So anybody who wants to come by after work will be there until 7:00. And Friday, March 1st, will be 8:30 to 12:00 because the building closes at noon. So that's the update that I have. If, for instance, if early voting closes and you find out over the weekend you're going to be absent from town on Election Day, you can still get in, come in and vote an absentee ballot on Monday. So that's my spiel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you volunteers for all this.
Oh, you have lots of people helping.
Any other public comments this evening? All right, moving along. Any board member comments? Great. The town administrators report.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Denise recently met with Lori Clark and wanted to inform the board that beginning in March, the planning board will be moving their meetings to the first and third Tuesdays of the month so they will not conflict with the select board. This will allow members of both boards to watch and/or participate with the other boards as necessary. And after almost a three-year wait, the new bucket truck was delivered to the Highway Department earlier this month. The zoning board has established a hearing schedule for the residences at Stowe Acres. They will be meeting on a number of different topics from March 5th through the end of July. A schedule of meetings and the specific topics can be found on the ZBA page of our website. And last but not least, our next issue of the Stowe Municipal Message will be posted later this week.
Thank you. All right, we have an appointment of Steven Lopper.
My name is Barry Ofsen, Captain of the Stowe Fire Department. The Stowe Fire Department currently has five Call Lieutenants on staff. And some time ago, one of our Call Lieutenants left us to pursue a full-time career with another community. He served as well. We wish him the best of luck. That left a slot open. For the past few weeks, there's been an intensive promotional process for the vacant position of Call Lieutenant. The promotional process consisted of interview boards, written tests covering anything from personnel issues to fire ground operations. As a result of that, it was not an easy. This was also performed by town officials and as well as Chief Fire Officers from other surrounding communities. As a result of this, I poured over the data myself. This was not an easy decision to make. We have got, we had a lot of good applicants. We've got a lot of really good people on staff. Steve Lapper was the one that clearly stuck out among the rest. Steve, you can stand up. Steve has been with our department since 2020. He's worked in the capacity of Call Firefighter as well as PerDiem firefighter, EMT. He's also a paramedic as well. In addition to that, he has also served in the capacity of our Fleet Maintenance Coordinator. He is responsible for the oversight of all the maintenance and repairs of our apparatus and our tools and equipment as well. And he's done very well with that. His communication skills, his organization skills are above average, way above average. And for this reason and so much more, I would like to submit Steven Lapper for your consideration to be promoted and appointed to the position of Call Lieutenant for the Stowe Fire Department.
Thanks. Any comments, questions from the board?
No, sounds like you went through a lot.
And we are the better for it.
Yes, exactly.
That's most excellent. I think we should move to a vote.
All right, Madam Chair. Ready for motion? Yep. Madam Chair, I move to appoint Steven Lapper to the position of Call Lieutenant for the Town of Stowe Fire Department for a term ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, fantastic.
Steven's, would you like just to get down? I'm going to take this one.
Yep.
Somebody needs to take a picture.
Okay, everybody look here. Oh, we'll try to do this.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Probably better with pins than guys.
It's because the shirt is such tight ween, right? All right, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next we have a presentation and an opportunity for public input on the Town Center Streetscape study.
Hi, thank you. I'm Valerie Ortiz. I'm the Planning Director in Stowe. I'm joined in person by Michael Seigel, our Land Use Planner, as well as members of the Planning Board. It looks like we have four members in person there tonight. Our consultants from Beta Group are also here. Dennis Flynn is the Project Lead in Person, joined by Jeff Mextuddus and Anna Sangree via Zoom. So before we dive into the presentation they prepared for us tonight, I just want to step back and provide some background about how we got to this moment, this phase in the planning process. So it's long been a priority for the town to upgrade the streetscapes in Town Center so that they more safely and conveniently accommodate all users, whether that's the children who cross 117 to get to Russell's or the library, whether it's joggers or bicyclists who frequent the area, people with walkers and strollers, cars trying to make safe left-hand turns. The goal is for these roads to better meet the needs of our residents and businesses. So in 2021, Town Meeting set aside the funds for the concept phase of this work, which is how we are able to be working with Beta Group today. Since that time, my predecessor in the Planning Department coordinated an intersection study with the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization in order to gather some baseline data and preliminary recommendations. So the study was completed last fall, and Dennis and his team have picked up from there and will present existing conditions and a review of initial concept plans for discussion tonight. So I'll pass it off to you, Dennis.
Okay, thank you, Valerie. I appreciate that introduction. I think that covers the background very well. So I am going to be presenting here, so I do apologize for the folks in front of me who may have to turn around. You can see the PowerPoint. It's coming up.
Well, we should be able to see it here.
And then you see it here. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not going to be talking over you, so I do apologize for that. So as Valerie mentioned, my name is Dennis Flynn. I am with Beta. I am serving as our Project Manager for this study. She also mentioned joining me by way of Zoom is Jeff Mextuddus and Anna Sangree, a couple of transportation planners that have assisted thus far. And I should also point out that I am not only serving in the capacity as a Project Manager on this study, I am also a Stowe resident, been here 15 years. So a little bit of a senior perspective. Doesn't happen often. So I think that adds a little bit of extra, extra something. We'll see what that is. So Michael, if you, oh, sorry. You don't mind? He's going to be going through the slides for it. We can just move on to the second one. So we'll just start off with a simple agenda. We do have quite a few slides. I'm going to try to go through them quickly in the interest of time. I do want to understand. There's a lot of things to get through. So I may go over something a little too quickly, too fast. We'll certainly have some opportunity at the end of the presentation to ask questions in case you may have those or I didn't cover something as clearly or as well as you'd like. So quick agenda. So we're just going to start off with our goals. And as Valerie mentioned, this is largely, you know, existing conditions overview. You know, we're going to take a look at what we have in the planning toolbox relative to biking, pedestrian amenities. And then we're going to finish up with some preliminary, stress preliminary concepts, some ideas we think that could be proceeded and progressed further. So, next slide, please. So what are the goals? I'll simply read them here, and hopefully the group there, the ribbon won't block too much here. But just four basic ones we've identified for this. Right, enhance the experience for people walking and biking within and to Stowe's Town Center. Improve connectivity for non-motorized vehicles, I should say, at between locations in and around the Town Center. Prioritize safety for all users with this future investment. And on the bottom there, design for all ages and abilities. This is required, American With Disabilities Act. Anything we do in the public infrastructure is required to be designed with those in mind. So if you don't mind, the next slide. So let's, so a little bit of that block though, that's over there. So just a high-level view of our study area. Is it possible?
Sorry about that.
Sorry about that. So I think a lot of folks are probably familiar with what we're seeing here, this map. This is our study area. It's kind of broken into two components. There's sort of the larger study area that is sort of highlighted here in white. Just generally, to the west, to Packard Road, to the south down along Gleeson Dale to Brookside Road, to the east over towards Deerfield Road with the idea of connecting into the Lower Village. Work that was done several years ago. And into the north, generally, it's everything up Hartley and Crescent Street. And this little dashed rectangular area you see here is really kind of the focus area. This is where most of that dynamic, most of the transportation activity, folks who are traveling in and through the town generally will be going through Route 16 and 117 intersection. So a lot of focus there in case the town common and the building we're currently sitting in. Next slide, please. So just a quick overview, get a sense of what has already been done. And there has been a handful of things done. So, next slide, please. So not expecting, there's a lot here, a lot of words, so not expecting everyone to read it. So I'm not going to read it. But it's just to kind of put it in perspective, an idea of some things that have actually been done mostly in this focus area. As you see, that note to the side, there have been several projects, several studies already underway. The bond, you see kind of a graphic, hard to read, but we'll get into this a little bit later, some details of the signalized intersection. And the Boston MPO did a study very recently identifying some improvements, some measures that can be taken there. If you can read it, it's a little bit small, but one thing that may jump out at you is putting crosswalks on all four legs of the intersection. Some other work that was done, the town does have a complete streets plan, a prioritization plan. One thing to highlight there, and I believe this is going to be constructed soon, is the sidewalk extension along Crescent Street. You can sort of see that in yellow up there, up to, I believe it's Warren Ave. Is that the street that Pilot wrote? That has not only been designed, but it is going to be constructed later on this year. And another, another project to highlight is, you know, we do have to talk about the library reconstruction. Wherever that may actually stand right now, I'm not actually sure. But one aspect of that that does impact the transportation, the public transportation, is the plan to take a section of Common Road and make it one-way towards, that's actually Library Hill Road. So you can kind of see the arrows there to designate that. So that's just a little bit of background of what has actually already been done up until this point. So we have something to work with. So, you know, what exists in the study area today? What are sort of the assets? What are the existing features? So, very simple, you know, this is the map, not a lot, you know, going on here. But what this is really highlighting is other roadways, the public infrastructure, all but a very little section of it is owned by us, which basically means if we want to make any changes, we want to make any modifications, we can go ahead and do that and don't need anybody else's authority to do so. We own it. The exception is, there's a little culvert bridge. You can see it there in yellow. It's owned by the state. It's not actually a bad thing. Generally speaking, the state should be owning structures. They should be responsible for them. We did a little digging into MassDOT's database, and this one's not showing up on it. And I'm thinking because it's not big enough. What I mean by that is you can, through their website, there is a portal where you can get the latest inspection report. The other, you know, outside the study area, close to Hudson Road, you definitely can get that. And I think it just maybe it's too small in terms of the span of it, not the width. That's the assumption I'm making right now. Obviously, we'd have to do a little digging if indeed we needed to look into that more. So, next slide, please. So, you know, as part of our evaluation, we did what I'll call sort of a high-level sort of visual assessment of the quality of some of the existing sidewalks, paths, and crosswalks. And we sort of color-coded your, you know, this actually, before getting that, I should mention, this is sort of the, you know, the layout of, you know, what is out there relative to non-motorized vehicle travel ways. So sidewalks, crosswalks, wheelchair ramps. So color-coded very simply here, the black representing asphalt. The red, if you, you know, if you see that up there, that's in the Town Center Park. That is a stone dust or just stone pathway. The green represents cement concrete. And that's really just exclusively on the school property center and hail. And then the yellow is basically just kind of representing generally where, you know, some of the crosswalks are. So there are, you can see on the bottom, I'll call it right-left of the screen, there are some gaps from a pedestrian and a bicycle standpoint. Through the commons, we don't really have anything. From the Town Center to the Town Center Park, you can see, you know, it's on this map. There's really not a connectivity there. South Side of Great Road, you know, just across from Center Street, we don't have any cross, or excuse me, sidewalks over there. We do have the crosswalk with the rectangular rapid flash beacon as we get closer to the signalized intersection. And then on Gleeson Dale Road, we go basically down to, I think, the Professional Building on the east side of the roadway, and then that's it. No more, no more sidewalk. So next slide, please. So jumping ahead a little bit, because this is the slide that represents sort of our high-level visual assessment of the condition. And we made a very simple, good, fair, poor of, again, the existing, you know, pedestrian infrastructure. And I should point out, I didn't mention on the last slide, we currently do not have any bicycle infrastructure in place. So with regards to the sidewalks and crosswalks, we basically rated most of it in fair to poor condition. The exception being the stone-tossed path, that's usually a low-maintenance facility, and then the cement-concrete sidewalks that are really in and around the school area. And that's not too surprising. Cement concrete is certainly more durable. And the good news is, even the ones that are in poor condition, we don't really have a lot of people using them. So it's not a situation where you have a lot of use and something is in very poor condition and can result in big problems. And we also kind of noted here, and we can go back to this slide, there's a lot of information just where we would say, you know, crosswalks or wheelchair ramps are missing or what's called non-compliant. So going back to the American Disabilities Act, there are certain requirements for the layout, design, the slope of wheelchair rampset for any crossing. I think you've probably obviously seen the tactile warning strips. Those are required. But furthermore, just the slopes and the orientation of those, there are strict requirements for how those are to be laid out. So next slide, please. So also a bit, looked into parking, kind of did a general parking assessment. We kind of broke that down into town, really publicly owned versus other, which would be private lots. So we do label town-owned. So I should point out that we are grouping into that category, the school parking lots. Now technically, maybe not town-owned, but it's not a privately-owned parking lot, say like at Nan's or, you know, some of these other ones you see here, like at the Town Building. And, you know, some things to point out here that there is, you know, no, really no on-street parking. It's all off-street parking in this area, with the exception, I think of, I think we have it there on the bottom note there, like two spots, I think, on Crescent Road by the Town Hall Building, and that's it. And then you can see here that, you know, there are a lot of lots, you know, a handful of lots that are in a relatively close proximity to Town Center, but they're somewhat disconnected. You know, there's been some conversions and reuse of some of the lots over by the old fire station. Right now, maybe there's a couple spaces, but the library, and I think in the future plan, there's really no dedicated parking. I think most people who do use the library will line up on Common Road. And we're not counting that in this, we're looking basically at parking lots. We're not really including that. You can see we don't have a color-coded. Parking on Common Road is part of, is part of the parking assessment. But there are other lots nearby that, if we provide better connectivity to, could be utilized to get to and from the library. Next slide, please. So looking a little bit into what's going on in terms of the operations and safety of our study area. So a lot of stuff up here, a lot of graphs, a lot of fancy things. Basically, just the way we summarize this data, and this is looking at crashes. And this is all obtained through MastDOT's online portal. Has a very comprehensive breakdown of the crashes that have occurred in our, in our study area. So although you see the dots and the color coding, some takeaways here that are interesting. Almost half of the crashes in this period, and I should point out, 2018 to 2022, we typically look at about a five-year period. Tough part about that is it includes the COVID year. And we see kind of odd things in that 2020, early 21 timeframe. Some areas, crashes plummeted. Other areas, they went way up. There's no real good trend or consistency amongst communities. The total seems high, 58, but we're looking at a pretty large area. And if you look at that, I'll call it bullet over there, the last one, most of them didn't involve more than one vehicle. So that's a lot of roadway departure, maybe somebody hitting a guardrail, hitting a utility pole. So half the crashes were just single vehicle, meaning it wasn't a result of a conflict with another vehicle, somebody trying to make a left turn, not provide, you know, not, you know, looking at a long enough gap to do so. And about 9% of them did result in injuries. The common trend with an accident or crash that results in an injury is excessive speed. And it kind of makes sense when you think about it a little bit. So that is actually, you know, a low number. So the big takeaway, yes, we have some crashes here. We don't have a number that we would say is rising to the level that we have a major infrastructure traffic control problem from a safety standpoint, especially with half of them being single vehicle. Those tend to be a little bit more, you know, on the user themselves. Next slide, please. So this graphic is put here not necessarily to wow you with the poor aesthetics. It's a basic stick-line diagram that we typically put together, a very simple way to sort of understand and visualize and look at a data collection. So as part of our study here, back in November of last year, we collected what's called turning movement counts during the peak periods. This slide up here in our study area, this slide up here is the AM peak hour. So this is just motorized vehicles. So I highlighted a few boxes here because oftentimes with an intersection, particularly a single, signalized intersection, the operations of that intersection really come down to a couple of critical movements. Usually, it's a left turn. Now, a couple of things I wanted to highlight here, we'll sort of work from that left turn. If you can read it, it says 88 lefts that travel westbound on 117/62 to continue on to Gleeson Dale. The reason I'm highlighting that, the current operations of that signal right now is what's called a protected-only movement. You only get the green arrow. So when you come up there and you want to make a left turn, you can only make that maneuver when there's a green arrow. 88 vehicles making a left. Combine, you know, when you compare that or you look at what's the conflicting or opposing through, which is 678, which does sound high. But that conflict does not dictate that you need to have a protected-only movement. Now, doesn't mean that's wrong, but that means we have some opportunity here. Now, one of those opportunities, we could, you've probably seen the four-section heads that have the green arrow, then they go to that flashing yellow aerial. So that's referred to as a protective and permissive phase. So you can, you know, look into revising that that you provided, the left turn, protected green arrow, and then you go to that flashing yellow area, which still allows that left turn to occur, but it just has to find a gap in the opposing traffic. And looking at, you know, the guidance that we rely on, looking at those two volumes would tell you that that opportunity is here. The other thing I want to point out, coming to the other side of the intersection, and we'll look at the afternoon or the PM volumes in a second. We have 17 right turns, and we have an exclusive right turn lane. That is an incredibly number, low number of right turns, about one every three minutes. And it doesn't warrant the need for exclusive right turn lane. You don't need it with that low of a number. Plus, it's not even all that long. So there's an opportunity. Do we need that right turn lane? Based on the demand, the volume doing it, we absolutely don't. The other one I wanted to point out, not at this intersection, but it does have some impact or it's indirectly related to this intersection. If you look at this 160, and I think this probably wouldn't surprise anybody, especially if you live on this side of town. Basically, the left turns that want to continue north are happening there. So the good news is, they're not happening at the signal. If they were happening at the signal, we would probably have worse operations at the signal. So we actually have what's called like a displaced left, and it's actually not a bad thing. So some people may not agree with me on that, and I understand that. But if we were to take away that, or we didn't want people to make that left, they would all now be doing it at the signal. And that's actually more left turns that are coming in the opposite direction. And we'd have to start talking about, do we need a left turn lane there? We have 160 lefts. So we would be adding more traffic to the signal. We'd have worse operations if we were to not have this right here. So there are some opportunities. So as part of evaluating intersections and operations, one thing we look for is can we displace a movement? Can we eliminate a movement, have it take place somewhere else if it's causing us major problems? If we were to push that 160 into the signal, there are three doing it. I don't remember who those three people are. We would start to have some operational issues at that signal. So we go to the PM volumes. It's very, sort of a similar story, but slightly different volumes. Now, I'll start with the right turns. We went up two. So it wasn't a situation where like, hold on, we only had 17 in the morning. Maybe we have a lot in the afternoon. No, we only have 19. Again, less than one car every three minutes. It doesn't rise to the level that we need to provide an exclusive right turn lane. Now, it did go up much higher with the lefts, 194, almost 200. However, the conflicting throughs went down to 340. So we still have that same condition where if we provided the protected phase, allowed it to go to something like that flashing yellow aerial, arrow, excuse me, that would still be acceptable even with that high volume. Something else you kind of have to think about, with that 194, most of those lefts are going to be arriving to the intersection in a situation where they're going to see that green arrow. They're going to arrive where it's red on this approach, so they'll start to stack up. So a lot of them will be able to take advantage of that green arrow. And those that come after, and they're looking at the flashing yellow arrow, most of this 340 will be clearing. It'll be spaced out. So it'll make it much easier for whoever doesn't make it there for the green arrow to make that left turn. And just highlighting this, because we did it on the AM 76 again. That would be happening here if we didn't have this situation to go on to Crescent, but it is a lower volume in the afternoon. Okay, thank you. Sorry, it was a lot there. Not much in the graphic, but just some things to point out. So again, we're putting together, you know, a lot of tables here that have a lot of information, just to highlight. So this is basically a summary of our existing operations analysis. So it's referred to as Level of Service. That's the industry standard. You may have heard that term. Maybe not. That's okay. So that's basically the industry standard for evaluating the operational. It's a qualitative assessment to essentially measure the effectiveness of an intersection, It's a qualitative assessment to essentially measure the effectiveness of a, an intersection, both signalized and unsignalized. And it's based on delay. And so the industry, the folks who provide this guidance, essentially establish thresholds for when the delay is acceptable to when we deem it to be unacceptable. Uh, and depending on your delay, you were assigned what's called, you know, level of service either A through F. Similar to a report card, some people use that analogy, however, we have E in this case. So one thing to point out is we do have a lot of As here. So even with those traffic volumes, one takeaway you can make, just based on the motor vehicle demand at these intersections, we do not have an operational problem, we do not have deficiencies.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, are we allowed to interrupt?
Oh, I should have, I am sorry. Why don't we wait till the end, is that okay?
Sure.
Is that good? Okay, well, and we'll certainly come back to this, I should have mentioned that, I apologize. Uh, one thing to point out here, uh, that great road, uh, westbound left, that 194 left turns, that does technically operate today at a level service F. So that's considered failing or your volume is exceeding the available capacity. Now, I'm pretty sure, and you know, we have looked at this a little bit, that the reason for that is because we have it set up as a protected only. It can only make that maneuver during that green arrow. If we were to change that and allow that to have additional capacity by way of that flashing yellow arrow indication, we would most definitely see that level service come down. And then the only other really critical movement, and it's at this intersection in the morning, great road eastbound, we're about capacity, we're right at the, the limit. So kind of a visual there, it's a little different than traffic. You got a cup, you fill it up to the brim. That's basically what we're talking about here. So any more water coming in, it's going to spill over and we're, you know, we don't have enough. So we're right at that, but that's okay. A lot of locations, a lot of areas, though I know it's a little bit different. You're lucky if you get level service E. There's so many, you know, congestion problems around this area. Uh, so this is actually very good news for the community that, you know, you may be thinking to yourself, my goodness, I drive down great roads so many days in the morning, I feel like I'm backed up to Hudson. That's not necessarily a result of, of the motor vehicle demand, there's other factors at play. It could be roadwork, the school buses, I think, contribute a lot to how vehicles progress uh, during certain times of day because of the frequent stops in, in both directions. And that, and that's just time, you're just sitting there going nowhere. So that really does, that can have a heavy impact on how well you progress through area, your mobility. So, uh, okay, next slide. Certainly come back to this. So same graphic, but now we're highlighting, and we combined this, AM, PM, bikes and pets. Uh, basically to highlight that we don't have a whole lot of activity when it comes to bikes and pets in this area. Most of it up, is up at Crescent and Harley Road, uh, with some pedestrian crossings. You know, nine, uh, across Harley, four, uh, across Crescent on, on the east side. We do have some, you know, occasional bike maneuver. And this was in November. So, um, not so cold that people wouldn't be out. But you know, that could, you know, there's no snow on the ground, uh, good weather, uh, it wasn't raining. So the body, you know, the big takeaway here is we just don't have, uh, a lot of people doing it right now. Largely because we just don't have the infrastructure in place to accommodate them. Excellent. So get a little bit into what we have to work with, some strengths, uh, assets, and then even identifying issues, uh, along with those. So, next slide. So this is just some photos around the area. Uh, there are, you know, spend a little bit of doom and gloom, but there are a lot of good things to, to, to start with. Uh, the town center park, very nice park, I think a lot of people, uh, do like that. Uh, when we talk about some of the pedestrian and, and, um, what I call pedestrian infrastructure, we do are, you know, we do have this high visibility. It's called a rectangular rapid flash beacon, these are very common, you're probably seeing them all over the, an enhanced crossing to really help with the visibility right here. That's a good asset, good feature. Although I'm not sure anybody actually uses these benches, they do exist, they are in the town common, I think. Is this like a trolley stop, is that?
It used to be, yeah.
Yeah, it used to be. So, um, don't sit on that one, this one's fine. Um, and then even the, you know, you can see the sidewalk conditions of, of the school are held up very well. Uh, and that, that's, 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 that's a good condition and that, that's, that's good for the students who will walk or even get out of their car and walk over to the building. So there are some, some good features already in place that we can, can build upon. Next slide, please. So kind of a busy map here, so let me just kind of walk it through here what we're trying to represent. So sort of a good news here that sometimes, you know, you don't really think about this too much, but a lot of the destinations or areas, including residents, including businesses such as Nance, and not even too far away from the lower village, is with a, within a reasonable walking distance to the town center. So we have two circles here, kind of co-centric circles. The inner circle, if you can't read it, is essentially a five-minute walk. You can see that there. Okay, if you start at the town center, you go in the direction five minutes, you'll go to those points. The outer circle, and we actually leave our study area, so we're not even showing it to the west, is a 10-minute walk. All within a reasonable timeframe for, for someone, for someone walking. So just kind of want to highlight that there, that there is, it's not as far away as it may seem right now to get to some of these, these destinations. Next slide, please. Another one, it's, you know, sort of interesting, you wonder, okay, what's the value here? There are a lot of parcels within our study area that the town owns. And that just, you know, potentially is some opportunity, some things if you were looking to expand, uh, you are not necessarily, in these particular areas, you would not have to go through any sort of right-of-way or easement process, you do own the land. Now, this is a little disconnected down here, I get it. Um, but it was just sort of to show the general, you know, town-owned parcels that are, that already, you know, exist. What does the town already, you know, have to work with and what land is, is, um, available to us? Excellent. So some barriers, we'll call them issues. Um, at the signal, I'm sure we've all been through it, probably in our cars. Uh, there are no pedestrian signals out there. We do have the crosswalks and by pedestrian signals, I'm talking about the, the man hand with the countdown timers. So you have to use the red and the green, uh, vehicle signals to make those crossings. Uh, not only is that not preferred, it's, it's, it's actually not even up the code. So anything we were to do there, any changes, we would, you know, definitely be required to, to implement that. If you look over to the other side there, right where the, uh, reduced speed limit, school zone, uh, flashing, uh, that's right in the middle of maybe a three, three and a half foot wide sidewalk. ADA compliance, I go back to that, minimum of 36 inches clear. So, uh, my guess is when they put that in, they said, oh, there's a utility pole here, we'll just put it right in front of that. Who's going to care? Um, it is very, it is very narrow, at least maybe a foot or two. Um, going back to, this is, uh, Crescent and Great, this is so wide. So of course nobody's ever going to cross like this, oh, don't want to do that. Um, we do have the crossing here, I think this was taken when we had two for a while, one that was old, that didn't fade as fast as we'd like, and then the other with the, the rectangular fashion, rapid flashing beacon. If you're on Crescent and you want to cross over to the other side, you have to travel, you know, away from the intersection. And I'm sure we all seen this crosswalk. Uh, part of the concerning, so no one's ever, this is way too long of a crossing. Part of the concern here is we do have a lot of lefts, as we pointed out earlier. And if it's what I'll call free-flow condition, these lefts are probably going very fast, given the, 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 you know, the, the, um, the soft angle here, if you will. Uh, so if there is somebody who happens to be crossing and there really is not a lot of exposure, as we saw on those, those counts, this person driving here could be going a bit too fast, not necessarily notice somebody crossing here, and that could be trouble. Uh, and then we actually got a shot of somebody biking. And yeah, they're in the car lane, so they have nowhere else, nowhere else to be. So, um, yeah. Next, excuse me, next slide. So what tools do we have available to us? What's in the toolbox, you know, around the area to help with, uh, biking? So a lot of resources out there, and of course, they all create a very perfect picture. Uh, not all these scenarios are necessarily, you know, you do Xerox copy right on top of, of your location. But, uh, we'll just kind of go around, uh, each one of them. Shared use path, very similar to the rail trails, the, the Aspet Rail Trail, the Bruce Freeman. Those are about, you know, eight to 10-foot wide paths that both bikes and pedestrians can utilize. Essentially that's just taking those and bringing them, you know, to the roadway. Uh, another idea, this, that one, um, you know, this, this one over here comes from the Mast dot separated bike lane planning design guide is you have a separate area, basically the sidewalk, uh, from, from the bike area. And it's usually buffered by a grass strip, maybe with trees. Need real estate to put these things in. Uh, conventional bike lane, that's what we have down in the lower village, uh, that's just an on-street bike lane. Uh, you can see that there. Uh, by the way, decided in this one to put somebody in a wheelchair ramp, so show that they will certainly be using the facility as well. And then, uh, very similar to an on-street bike lane, because it's also on-street, it's a buffer bike lane, which is essentially the bike lane, but just has a little bit of space between you and the motorized vehicle, give you a little bit of comfort. Uh, I should point out, the minimum requirement by Mast DOT, if you're going to go through them, they're going to be involved, is the buffered bike lane. You have to start there, and if you can't fit that in, you have to go through a process explaining why you can't. I will say right, you know, we can go to the next slide. I will say right now, in this area, uh, with the traffic volumes and the speeds, uh, separated facility is, is preferred. Uh, on-street bike lanes, uh, would not be recommended. So just, um, kind of showing some of these in, in action. Uh, a lot of them, uh, somewhat local, uh, or at least in, in the state. Shared use path, this is down in Nantucket, uh, if you ever find yourself over there, but there's certainly closer ones than this. Uh, also over in Franklin, uh, in Sudbury, you know, just down the road, there's an example of shared use path. Here's a conventional bike lane, we have one in town, so you're familiar with that. This one just happened to have a little bit of a green paint in it. Uh, rail trail in, in Natick, if anybody's been out there, should also, a little plug here, this was designed by Beta. Uh, so there's a reason that got in the slide. And a little bit more urban, uh, because a lot of these, these, these strategies, uh, do, do, you know, do lean towards an urban setting, but we can adopt them to a more sort of suburban rural area like this. All right, I'm almost done, I promise. So, uh, from the pedestrian standpoint, a couple of things here, obviously, you know, we have our rapid flash beacon. Uh, we, we're already there. Uh, we already have one thing, one checkbook, but little things, um, that don't, don't necessarily jump out as having a, a, you know, a big, a big, um, benefit, you know, curb extensions, you know, pull the curb out. Uh, you know, if you have on-street parking, that's a very good, uh, very good strategy. It shortens the length of the crossing. Uh, raised devices, these, you know, like a raised crosswalk below at a raised intersection. These are vertical deflections that physically force a vehicle to slow down. So if we're concerned about excessive speeds, uh, you physically cannot go too fast over these devices, you've probably done it. Up in Randolph, Vermont, we went pretty far here, pedestrian scale lighting, I know lighting is, there's a lighting ordinance in town, but just something to highlight here. Uh, talk about the pedestrian signal, these are basically the standard. And you've all probably seen the countdown timers, uh, which were very helpful, very useful, because nobody knew what that flashing bar meant. And then when the minute we put those timers in there, oh, now I know how long I have to get across the street. Uh, and then the last one I just touched on was the raised intersection. So next slide, please. So what are some ideas? What of these ideas can we think about or incorporate here? I will stress, these are very preliminary. You know, these haven't been detailed, uh, out by any means, uh, but they're just to start the conversation about opportunity. So next slide. So, uh, this is a high level of our sort of first pass at, in the focus area, where primarily what we can do in order to make some improvements. The red is generally, uh, sort of a shared use path, uh, some options for a shared use path. And then we, we do have some, some ideas for both, uh, the signalized intersection and then Crescent. And we're going to zoom into a couple of those here in the next few slides. So we will start with, this is the commons. So this is looking west, this is focusing on the commons. Uh, nothing too, um, too fancy about this photo. Yes, we've probably all driven this approach, but if we go to the next slide, there is space in there to actually provide what we, you know, a shared use path. So this would be something about 10 feet wide. I am going to highlight that we are currently showing lighting in here. Now, again, I know there's a lighting ordinance in town, I don't fully understand it. Um, the reason we are showing that, when we're talking about pedestrian bicycle facilities, ideally, lighting is, is recommended. Uh, when we talk about pedestrian safety, bicyclist safety, the two main components, driver expectation, which you don't really have to worry about with a shared use path, and visibility, those two things. Lighting is the best thing you can do for visibility. So just to highlight there, how that would lay out if, if, if we could get something like lighting in there. There's opportunity to put benches. Uh, so if we go to the next slide, please, we've got a different perspective. So this is in the commons. Basically the same idea, but just looking back, uh, towards the other direction. If you go to the next slide, and here's our biker now going the other direction. Uh, we have somebody sitting on the bench. So this is kind of an idea of how that would fit in if we were to look at sort of a meandering, sort of shared use path, uh, in, in the commons. Uh, I am aware, you know, we haven't laid this out in any detail. I do believe, uh, it's the library, that the, is a deceptive system is somewhere in this area. So we obviously have to think about that and consider that. Last thing we want to do is put some sort of pavement over there or access, uh, to that. Um, so, and this is not the exact areas, that'd be sort of further to the west. So next slide, please. Uh, so, you know, right out front here, uh, where we are, uh, a great road. So one thing I'll, I'll highlight is we do have a pretty wide shoulder on, on this south side here, so some opportunity. And you'll see what we're thinking with the next slide. Similar idea. So our bench user is now over here. We use the same people, uh, it was just easier. Again, sort of a 10-foot path, you can see a bike, uh, in the background there. And, you know, one thing to highlight here is we haven't shown whether we would need to make any modifications, adjustments to the travel lanes. We very well may need to to fit this in, or maybe this has to slide closer to town hall. And what I mean by that is we may potentially have to consider narrowing the lanes a little bit, which is okay. Uh, they're probably 12 feet, we can go down to 11, we have a little bit of a buffer on, on the other side of the road. But, um, there, there is enough here that this can be considered or looked at further. And in this case, we also put in, uh, or highlighted, in addition to the lighting, some, some trees. Um, one thing about trees, it has been, uh, shown, or there's been some studies that show that that, a good tree line between motorized vehicles and a pedestrian or bicycle way is a, is a significant feature. It really enhances, enhances the, um, the attracting this other facility. If, uh, they've done a few studies on this, that that's a very, a, a very key feature is to have some sort of like landscaping, uh, tree line to provide that positive protection. It just gives a better feeling to the pedestrians that, you know, not right on top of the motorized vehicles. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so this is just looking back the other direction. Uh, clouds rolled in, so photo taken in a different day, but you can just see, looking at it from this, that person's still sitting there. But here's the trees, and you can see, you know, um, you know, that pathway, if, if, you know, just looking back this other direction. And, you know, we, this potentially have some opportunity, you know, closer to the building. We're showing this, you know, if we were to start basically at the edge of pavement and go over, how does that look? So, um, that's exactly how it looks. And I will highlight, it's probably hard to see here, but we're showing this path extend, as you see right here, all the way down to the intersection, taking the state, the place where that right turn lane is. So that's a good opportunity to be able to connect that into the intersection. Next slide, please. So speaking of intersections, and this is a rough concept, but we talked about how, or I did, how wide that intersection is. There's an opportunity to bring this down. Now, it's not met without challenges, obstacles. Whoever lives here, this may not be, they may not be too happy about something like this. So relocating, extending this driveway is something that will have to be considered, uh, with an idea of like this. But a couple of the highlights, this is a much shorter crossing. We would take it away from up here, bring it down to the intersection, where it would be in line with sidewalks and proposed path. Left turns would be coming at a slower rate, uh, much safer condition. And now we sort of create a scenario where the crossings are really happening at the corners of, of the intersection. So that's a, you know, something we looked at there, just to take advantage, you know, just a lot of open space there that we can take advantage of. Uh, the next intersection. So here's a bit of a rendering on, uh, you know, using the photos on the street of how that would look. So from this perspective, that driveway doesn't look too long. If you go back to the other photos, like, well, that's really long. So this is just generally the idea of how that would, how that would present as you're, uh, either driving or, or walking on it. And you'll notice we, we just used to see people everywhere. Next photo, or next slide, please. So the other intersection, uh, there's a handful of things that we think we can do here. So, uh, I'll start with the crosswalks. Okay, right now, I think we only have two, I think we looked at that earlier. We would certainly recommend, let's get crossings on all four corners. That's something that was recommended in that MPO study. You know, the other idea, here's the shared use path, the right turn lane is gone, we don't need it. We can replace it with the shared use path. Obviously, we want to talk to the gas station owner, but I, uh, don't know if the delivery vehicle needs this, but this driveway right now is not in a great spot, and we certainly wouldn't want it in the future. They may have something to say about that. Obviously, we wouldn't propose or recommend or design anything without, uh, discussing it with any of these stakeholders. Uh, you can see on the corners, we can bring, it's a very wide intersection. And it's, it's not aligned, aligned on that well either, particularly on the, the north and southbound approaches. So we have some opportunity to bring this in, uh, tighten up these crossings. And that creates some real estate for the shared use paths, some, uh, wheelchair ramps. Um, on the, you know, so on the northbound approach, we wouldn't necessarily change, uh, the lane configuration there. We do have a significant number of right turns. Uh, we think that would be, um, that would be appropriate to me. We think that would be, that would be appropriate to maintain that. The westbound approach, we talked about the left turns. One thing to highlight here, we see those two white vehicles. That's where they currently stop today. Because the stop line is that far back from the intersection. The intersection today is right here. Okay, and we're telling everyone, you got to stop here. The reason we're doing, we, they have to do that, the reason it's set up that way, I believe, is the signal layout is this diagonal span, these two strain poles on either corner with the span. So these signal heads are right here. So the only way anybody coming on this approach can see them is if we make them stop here. So if we address that, because if you're less than 40 feet, you're just not going to see it, especially in the taller cars. So we address that. This is, you know, talking about reconfiguring the entire, rebuilding the entire signal system. We can pull up his stop line, okay, gives us more queuing capacity. Couple of vehicles could fit in there. And it's just less time that they'll need to get through the intersection. Couple other points is there's a, could have brought this up earlier. There's this median island, middle median island right here. I think all it's doing is housing a sign. We don't need it. And in fact, it's creating a situation where this approach is like over here. Okay, if you ever go out there, especially in the right, you know, even in the through lane, you're lined up with the commons. So bring that over, this will shorten the crossing here. So a lot going on here, but a lot of good opportunities. And it really has no negative impact on the motor vehicle operations. And we, just formalizing on the southbound approach, what I think really kind of happens when people stack in two lanes. But sometimes this person is going through and not left, and someone back, you know, is behind them. So an opportunity to just sort of formalize, you know, what's really taking place. And we have such a short distance between this signal and the four-way stop. If we can find a way to, you know, create a little bit more space, just to kind of stack them. So we minimize, we can't fully eliminate, minimize the queuing back into that intersection. That would be helpful. And just tell people, well, if you're going left, get over here. If you're going through, get over here. As opposed to, well, going through, so I'm going to stay to the left, because maybe that guy's going right, I don't know. So if you're not, you know, if you're not directing, or given the actual guidance, you know, they kind of leave it to their own devices, it doesn't always work out as well as you'd want it to. Okay. Next slide. So just a couple of other opportunities at, you know, high level here. This is the old fire station. Here's the parking lot. There's space here. Now, again, we'd have to talk to this property owner. I do believe they have a nice no trespassing sign right here, if you go out to that parking lot. So, but this could provide a nice connection from Crescent up to the Center School driveway, something like that. Down at the always stop, obviously, not obviously, but I think we would recommend to keep that an always stop. Possibly a raised intersection could work there. We'll see. Not set in stone. But we'd also recommend that all four, all four legs get crosswalks. I don't believe that's the case now with wheelchair ramps. And then, you know, the opportunity that creates for you is if you're someone who's parked here, this creates a nicer environment to walk to something like the library. Especially if this is raised. Now, I have heard some firsthand accounts of people saying, folks don't always stop, that there's a lot of violations. You know, my wife, in fact, was coming through here. She was stopped, this person didn't even stop. Said if she wouldn't have been a little bit more cautious, would have been a T-bone. So firsthand experience with that. So definitely something to think about there. And if we still have compliance issues, one way to really force that is if you raise up the intersection. Not necess, you know, we'll see. That would force at least vehicles to slow down, or they're really going to do damage to their car. Next slide, please. So if we go a little bit further east, to the one area that we don't own, and that's the bridge. That right now is a pinch point. If we were to try to extend this shared-use path, you can see we're showing some general opportunities. We get to this culvert, this bridge, and it's very tight. So there are some opportunities, you know, we're seeing cantilever, that's one option. Some sort of shared-use pass on the existing structure. Here's kind of, it's not a great photo, but here's kind of an example in Woodbury, Connecticut, of something similar. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see kind of an idea, and these are rendering, a couple of renderings of some suggestions here. So this is sort of the idea, that you would have something that kind of extends off the roadway. We call it cantilever hanging off. That could be about eight, 10 feet wide to provide that accommodation. The other option is to pull it tighter, if you look at the next slide, towards the roadway. Again, we'd probably have to consider some changes. Where you're on this side of the guardrail, if you've looked at that last one, we were overhanging the guardrail, to pull it a little tighter. But the challenge here is we do have to contend with the structure. And MassDOT owns that. So it's not as simple as just putting a nice picture on the screen here. There are some considerations. And like I said, we tried to do a little digging into the assessment of that structure, and it's just not in their database. So next, please. And just a couple, I think we just have two more slides here. Just high-level ideas about, if you take an aerial view of some of these locations. I'll start over here on Crescent. You know, we do probably right now have some higher speeds coming through there, probably contributing to some of the stop sign violations because of that soft left turn. This is potentially a roadway where we can look into some, you know, traffic calming devices. Can we tighten up the intersection? Can we, you know, potentially raise one of the crosswalks? Just some general things right now to think about, you know, with that roadway. And, you know, this was just something we noticed that if you, and I think this is Russett Lane, so this is the back, sort of the west side of the Pilot Grove Apartments. I think people do this now, I think students do this now, with a walk from this area, say they're going to Hale, and they just kind of come out of the woods. A lot of people have seen that, that they're already doing something like this, navigating through the woods. Is there an opportunity to sort of formalize that, make that safer? And sort of enhance that possibility? Again, something to consider or think about. And the next slide, which I think is our last, I just want to leave you with this. We talked a lot about shared-use paths, which are generally impervious surfaces. However, there are some opportunities to help us with that. I believe the Center School parking lot is supposed to be an impervious lot. I don't know if anyone would think, okay. The tough part there is it does rely on some good maintenance, kind of go out there with the vacuum, for lack of a better term, that clearly have to work effectively. But it's a better situation for your stormwater, it's not coming down and just washing off, and you have to contend with it from a pedestrian standpoint. So just some ideas there, even as simple as just a stone dust path, which is a surface. So that's it. That's, the last slide I think is questions, if you go to the next one. Yes, thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you for indulging me. There was a lot there. If you have any questions, there's two people online I'd be glad to take. No, I'll be happy to take them. They'll help me out if need be. So however, yes.
One moment, if I can, I'm sure that I already invite the participants to unmute themselves at this point on Zoom, or would you like me to take the?
Yes, no, let's unmute people. Please be courteous and don't speak over each other. Speak one at a time. And let, don't hold forth too long at once. Nancy?
I was going to say my fielding.
So obviously, this plan is about expanded sidewalks, pathways, all of that, expand the use. Where is the snow plowing plan in this?
Are you asking us?
Well, I'm asking the town. Has that been a separate discussion on how these are going to be maintained in weather situations to be year-round, or is there no intention for them to be year-round?
It's not for us to answer. We don't know.
No, I don't, I don't.
You're the planning board.
There has been no idea.
To you as well. And, you know, I would say that
That's a great question.
We don't maintain our sidewalks now.
Right.
So I think this is probably the same level unless we change our policy in town.
I mean, most of the rail trails I go to, they don't plow them in the wintertime.
Right.
You're lucky if they're, they're not icy.
Hello. Amelia Thomas, I live on Crescent Street, so I am very familiar with these. You mentioned that you did your pedestrian and bike survey in November.
Right.
Do you have any comparison to the numbers in like July? Because there are entire bike teams that are between two and 25 people who fly through this intersection. And it might be worth knowing what those numbers are and where they're turning. Because if you're trying to build a shared space, which is awesome, fully like the idea of a shared space, I'm not sure the 30-person team is going to go on it.
Right. No, it's definitely a good question, good point. The, and thank you for asking, it allows me the chance to clarify. The counts we were focusing on are more specifically like peak hour, typical weekday. To sort of demonstrate that you just don't have a high demand of, call it commuters, or people who are, you know, going, you know, home to elsewhere, using the existing facility. There is a biker pedestrian, absolutely right, I see them as well, the bike caravans that come through here on the weekend. And honestly, I agree with you, I'm not sure that they would get on the shared-use path. I think they would continue to ride as a group on the weekends in the roadway. There's sort of a different dynamic. Now, if they do use the path, great, that would be amazing, that would be fantastic. So nothing we are proposing, I think, would preclude or make anything more challenging, difficult for those groups. But you're absolutely right, they come in, I see packs, 20, 30 sometimes. If they do use the path, the nice thing there is we don't have sort of the issue where motor vehicle, what do I do? Do I get all the way over into the other lane to go around them? Do I just get over? There's a little bit of concern when bikes are using the roadway. But that's a challenging one, because we, even if we created, I've seen areas where there's on-street, the bike lanes, the buffer bike lanes, and these bike caravans are still taking up the whole travel lane. They sort of command that type of, they sort of dominate, if you will. Now, whether or not this is, you know, positive or means anything, we tend to only see them, like you said, good weather conditions in the summer, on the weekends. So they're not necessarily out there competing or conflicting with your everyday, you know, your commuter traffic, folks trying to get to school. That would be, you know, probably a cause for a little bit more consideration. So that's a long answer to a short question.
Yeah, all good. And then you have at least a few online.
So I'd like to take somebody from on Zoom, and then who's on the most in the room?
Matt was first, so I'll ask him to unmute.
Yes, please.
Hey, so I didn't catch the very beginning of all this, but the section, the portion talking about Great Road and Library Hill and Hartley and that intersection. Every day I take my daughter to school, they do a great job of flowing the traffic through the school section. One, for the first year of taking her to kindergarten, and you can chastise me for this, I would, I often have business either in Maynard or the post office, because our post office doesn't open until nine. Or I go down to Abu Shan or Shaw's. And for the first year I was doing that, I was going down Crescent Street to Great Road. And I know you're not supposed to do that, because one day, I think during first grade, there was a cop posted down there, and, you know, it's not a throwaway at that time in the morning. But I do notice now that I've stopped doing that, that section between where Hartley and Crescent meet, that four-way stop and the light, you have to make a decision there a lot of times. You know, if you want to go down into Maynard and go east on Great Road, that section of road fills up very quickly. And it blocks, you wind up waiting at that four-way intersection on Hartley, and you block a lot of the traffic coming out of the school. Has any consideration been given to fixing the intersection at Crescent and Great Road? Maybe putting a light there, or doing something to make that a more viable intersection, so that we can kind of flow some of that traffic away from the school in the morning and not have to use the intersection at Great Road?
The Crescent, where Crescent comes out?
The eastbound Crescent Street and 117.
Where you're not supposed to merge during peak hours.
On the east end.
On the east side.
Yeah, because there's a reason.
The line of sight is pretty bad.
Yeah, and it's turning cars and traffic.
Well, so the question is, has there been any thought? And so that's a fair question.
That's a fair question.
And has there been any thought?
It's part of this study, we basically just had a very similar discussion as what Matt has explained. I will say, sort of tacking onto that, I think the signage is a little confusing. I know upstream, before you decide to go in Crescent on either side of the roadway, there is some restrictions that are probably very much ignored. Then if you get down to the end of where Crescent intersects Great Road, I think depending on the time of the day, you can't do anything. Because it'll say no left turn, or no right turn, seven to nine. So if you follow those signs, I mean, you stay there. So there should be some thought. Now, it wasn't a very big focus point of this particular study. I do my, the feedback or some of the, some of my own observations are, we are trying to avoid that, they come through, people coming from the north, sort of South Acton area. We want them to come into the signal so they're not speeding, if you will, or cutting down Crescent. And I believe somebody mentioned that if you do try to make a left, that is a difficult sight distance. In order for that to justify or what we call warrant a signal, right now it's not going to, because we just don't have the demand of traffic on Crescent Road to warrant it. There are strict guidelines in what's called the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD. It's a federal manual that comes all the way down to the local level, guidance for when putting in a traffic signal. And it's largely driven by motor vehicle conflicting volume. You probably have enough traffic, because you have the signal right here, pointing in the right direction, so 62 and 117, on Great Road. What you don't have is enough traffic on Crescent to justify putting that in. So again, not a whole lot has been looked at as part of this study relative to that. And I do sympathize with the scenario he's describing. I've lived that myself. You know, trying to get through that always stop as it backs up and curves back around onto Crescent, that gets a little tough. If you're lucky enough to be there when the school buses are coming out, and they basically take up the entire space between the signal and the always stop, that's tough. The reality is, from like, you know, looking at it from our perspective or a study perspective, that's a short duration. Now, if you happen to be out there during that short duration, that 100% impacts you. But in terms of the overall impact, the, how long does that, that peak intense condition last? It is very short.
You also discussed earlier the fact that putting in this dedicated eastbound turn at Library Hill and 117 could improve.
Could help a little bit there, yeah. At least, I think people try to use it that way. And as part of further advancing and design on that intersection, are there opportunities to extend that as far as possible? Really nothing more, just giving the people the proper guidance. It's wide, this is a left turn lane, if you're making a left, get in over here. If you're not, you stay to the right. Right now, it's just wide. So we usually leave people up to their own, however they interpret it to get in there, so.
Quick last comment on that, yeah. I just, so I like the idea of the left turn lane, I'm all for that. But even with that, the problem is that, that is, that left turn to go east on Great Road is a bit of a free-for-all. Because you've got that long queue, I forget, but you've got that long queue on the other side of Great Road, but that the short queue on the side with the school. So if there was like a dedicated left turn light there for even like 20 seconds, you know, that would, that would make having a left lane, that would kind of bolster having that left lane. So, yeah, people do tend to like form two lanes there. I know I try to do it when I'm going that direction. But yeah, I think to bolster that left lane, you really need some kind of, I don't know, time period where those people can make the left onto, because people are very aggressive about crossing over Great Road. That's, so that's all I have to say.
Yeah. If I could, the current alignment and width of the intersection is not helping. If we can tighten that up, because if you're going to make that left, vehicles are so far offset from you, and some come in the other direction, it's not really clear, is this guy, you know, going left, coming in the opposite direction? Is he going through? I mean, I know, you can look at their indication, but if we can tighten up and get that aligned better, that'll make for a much simpler movement as well. Because I, myself, have been, I could have probably went, but I'm not really sure what the guy in the other direction's doing, so I held back. And that'll ultimately hurt with the flow and operations of an intersection.
All right, thank you.
All right, so John, and then somebody else from Zoom, and then somebody in the room, and then somebody from Zoom.
John Clonar-Mano, Boxwell Road, Plan Board Member, but speaking as an individual. First of all, as a walker, not sure I would like to have groups of bikes on the shared lane, because I've been run over, almost run over multiple times on rail trails. So that's a question, but that wasn't my real question. What I was going to ask is, you did some pedestrian counts.
Yeah.
And I'm not surprised that there's not many people in those areas. However, if you did the pedestrian counts during the morning and peak traffic times, I'm not sure you caught the kids that are coming out of Hale School, going to Library, which they're not doing now, because the library's not open.
Right.
But coming down from Hale, going to Library, or going to But, uh, coming down from Hale, going to library or going to, uh, the convenience store. And I think that would be important to know and obviously to consider.
Right, no, that, that, that is a good point, you know, we need to focus primarily on, you know, the, the sort of typical commuter hours. Um, but you're absolutely right when, uh, you talked about the schools.
The student traffic is, uh, earlier than the, than the PM.
It is, yeah, the, you know, Hale, they're, you know, they're done at like two fifty. Uh, and then like an hour later is, is center school. Um, and you're right, and some of them will run over to Russell's, um, they usually go to the library, like you pointed out. Uh, so, that, no, that's certainly a good point. And, um, you know, what that number is, you know, that's, is part of sort of like, uh, including the whole group, the whole team of stakeholders. These are discussions, you know, with representatives from the school that we, we can get to and get sort of their feedback about that as well. But that's a, it's a very good point. You know, we have to be mindful of that as well, that certainly is, is a consideration.
Okay. Kevin?
Hi, Kevin Gross, uh, one ten Little Drive. Uh, thanks for the presentation, a lot of great information. Uh, I particularly appreciate the, uh, the quantified metrics that, that have been included. That was very helpful for my understanding. A few years ago, uh, there was a, a section of Route one eleven in Boxborough that received a sidewalk. And, uh, I think in the years since that was put in, I've seen people on that sidewalk twice. So my question is really, uh, specific to the, some of the sidewalks that have been, um, hypothesized or proposed i- in this material. Are, are we confident they will actually get used? And I think that, when I'm particularly sensitive to, i- is the fact that Stowe is a town of, you know, acre-sized lots. We are not a dense urban, uh, town like, um, Newton, for example. I think there's some examples of, uh, projects in Newton. Well, that's really just my question, you know, if we build it, are people actually gonna use it?
I will.
Yeah.
I use them and I'll use it more.
Right.
Well, there'll be a few people that use it, no doubt, uh, but, you know, there's, there's what, you know, ten, twenty, maybe thirty houses that are, that are here out of, out of the entire town. I, I just question, question whether, you know, I repeat myself, I question whether it would be used.
Well, it's kind of the chicken and the egg problem, right? What comes first, the sidewalks or pedestrians? You know?
Yeah, and it's, there's no correct answer right now to that question. You know, right now, we won't have any, uh, pads using the facilities, because they, they just, they just don't exist. Um, you know, it sort of comes back to, I think you're sort of alluding to a cost to benefit. Do we invest in this, do we create more of a, a maintenance for ourselves, more infrastructure for very little use? Um, it's, it's a challenging question, but in terms of, you know, I'll say this, in terms of transportation infrastructure, this is basically the only real direction to go, particularly in this town. We're not gonna widen one seventeen, we're not, you know, we're not gonna be creating, you know, major intersection improvement. So in terms of, you know, if we're looking to make an investment in, in transportation infrastructure, it really, this is where it should go. It should go to the, the multi-mobile side of things. Um, and honestly, all those, uh, changes at both those intersections, yeah, you can do them without considering the pedestrians, but it's really, and the bikes, but it's really, that's what's the starting off point, to look into making the changes at the signalized intersection. Otherwise, it generally operates okay. You know, it's like, why spend, um, believe it or not, signals, uh, full signalized intersections right now with the prices are coming in at like three to four hundred thousand dollars? So why spend all that money, um, just for the vehicles, I guess, just, just to have?
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree that at the, at the intersections you've highlighted, that no use. So I think where I'm really, what I'm really reacting to is the, um, if I understand correctly, you've proposed, um, uh, sidewalks leading, um, up Crescent Street all the way to, uh, to Warren Street, I think it is, the Pilot Grove Apartments and so forth. And whether those, you know, that kind of extension into, um, you know, away from the, the busy intersections, away from the true center of the town would, uh, would benefit us. As, and what, if it receives sidewalk?
It'd probably benefit them.
I'm gonna speak, Kevin, briefly to that, because I come up Crescent Street, um, regularly, I live on Boxborough Road as well. And I saw one day a young woman who clearly lived on Warren Road with a stroller, and I'm not sure whether she had a dog as well.
She does, and she's there every day.
Navigating a stretch of road that goes around a slow curve, it's kind of blind, and there isn't sidewalk for part of it.
It is a tough curve.
And I was just terrified for her. And I think that in itself warrants, I mean, that's a, a lot of exposure for the town to have no sidewalk when people need to walk there. So.
I would argue that, that could be, same could be said for, you know, Little Drive and Harvard Acres. We got lots of walkers out here and no sidewalks.
Yeah.
And we've got cars that drive too quickly from time to time, so should we put sidewalks on every street in the town?
Eventually.
If they develop, they require it.
Mike, yeah. Hi, Mike Jordan, Packard Road, um, just a, a couple of points. First of all, I, I'd like to agree with both of the two people that, that made points on Zoom. That, um, left turn, when you're coming down Library Hill Road, trying to get in, onto one seventeen, uh, eastbound, especially in the morning rush area, is extremely difficult. You know, you can wade through three light cycles there, trying to, trying to make a left, a left turn. So I think, if you're thinking about doing something about that, you not only need a left turn, you do need a, you know, a green arrow for a left for part of the cycle, because we currently don't do that. And for some, for some reason, it just so happens that you're sitting there waiting, your light is red, there's nobody coming, coming northbound. And then, like, a minute, you know, ten seconds before your light turns green, thirty cars come up, and, and, and you can't get past them, because they're all coming straight, right? So, so it's gonna go light. The second thing is, um, just looking at your statistics, it seems like that particular area is already pretty safe. I mean, so we had sixty accidents, but only nine of them in, nine percent, so that's like six, you know, six or seven accidents involved injury, and, I mean, you know how many of those were fatalities?
Zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, and there were zero bike or pedestrian, I mean, or, or pedestrian accidents.
I believe that's correct, yeah, largely because we had no bikes to hit.
So, in a sense, you know, this is not a, like a zero-cost initiative. We will be spending a lot of money for, for an area of town that's already pretty safe. It seems like, you know, we don't have a problem, you know, we're looking for a solution where maybe there isn't even a problem. I mean, yes, it would be a, sort of a nice thing to have, but, I mean, in, in town, we're already, already groaning under the weight of the taxes that were passed for the schools in, you know, in, in the last town meeting, you know. Uh, our concern is, you know, can we drive to work to earn the money to pay our taxes? And I don't really think we should be spending a lot of time on stuff that's only kind of nice-to-have, window dressing, when the taxes in this town are already insanely high. This is obviously not gonna be cheap, any of this stuff. And, as you said in your, um, in, 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 in your data, at the moment, there are like single digits of pedestrians and bikes at all of those intersections. Admittedly, it was in November, and it, maybe it wasn't rush hour, but even so, you, you're comparing them with maybe like, you know, hundreds, several hundreds, maybe a thousand cars in the same, in the same period. You know, you, the people that you're gonna be benefiting is a tiny fraction of the road users for a very large amount of money. And I, I just, my personal view is it's just not worth it.
The, the one thing I'll say about that, in terms of, the, the big dollars are gonna be the construction dollars, the implementation costs. And there are a lot of opportunities, and I think some of the folks on, on Zoom with me could expand on these, for funding, that would not require one dime from the residents of, of Stowe. Uh, you, me, everyone in this room, there's a lot of grants out there. Mass DOT has a transportation improvement program, there's a number of things out there. Uh, the, the complete streets, um, uh, uh, projects that I was showing you earlier on, those are all through a grant system. Um, you just have to spend a little bit of your time applying. And so the, the money would really be in developing the documents that would be handed to a contractor, and then through grants. Uh, there's Massware's grants, so we talked about complete streets. Um, I don't know if anybody online from Beta could expand on that, but there's a lot of opportunities, because the, the construction fee is, is very prohibitive. Uh, can be very cost prohibitive to do things of that.
Can I just, uh, one, one quick follow-up? I saw you, I was very interested to see your bike lane going down the common.
Yeah.
So, part of the reasoning for putting that, uh, common road to be one-way is the fact that the library's gonna be expanding, assuming that works, and that that would result in the road being too narrow for two-way operation. And we would, you know, and the thing was, well, you can't build on the common, of course, right? But it seems like we can build on the common, if we can put a bike lane on the common, we can actually widen the road next to the library so we could keep two-way working on Great Road. Because trying to turn into Common Road, if you're traveling east, you've got no sightline. So you see, so if, if you're coming down from the north, you're trying to get into the library, you can't, if you're not gonna be able to turn down Common Road, you're gonna make that left turn at the light and make the left turn into the far end of, of Common Road. And you've got no sightline. That's a really tricky left turn. So I, I'm strongly in favor of keeping two-way working on, on Com, on, on, on Common Road. And we could do that if we're allowed to take some feet off the common, which apparently the bike lane can do.
So.
Okay, I gotta keep it moving. I've got a lot of people with hands up on Zoom, we've got more in the room. Uh, Mr. DeLuca is next on Zoom. And, um, what I'd like to do is just, please ask your question, and we'll have a response, and then we'll move to the next person, so everybody gets a chance and we can go home before midnight.
Okay, thanks. Um, so my basic concern is with the shared use of pedestrian and bike, uh, ways, and the increasing, uh, use of, uh, electric bikes makes it even kind of more fragile for the, uh, terrifying for the pedestrians, uh, with, uh, inappropriate use of electric bikes on some of the, uh, the bikeways. And not, not that it's inappropriate to have them on the bikeways, but it, but the people can, uh, easily go, uh, faster than they pe, than they really ought to, and, and they tend to often go closer to you than you really would prefer them to, to go. If you're walking a dog and that the, you know, having the, the bicycle between you and the dog suddenly becomes very, very scary for everybody. So that, that was my, my main concern. Just a short comment on the library and, and that intersection at Hartley Crescent Street, Library Hill Road. I, I mean, I think that people have to kind of wrap their heads around the notion that if you are going to the library, the vast majority of the parking for the library is going to be kitty-corner across that intersection where the old fire station is. You should think about the parking near the library for people who have mobility issues and need to park near the library. If you can walk, walk across the intersection, and that's where you really should be parking. So that's how you, you, you know, when you talk about going to the library, really using Common Road as a, if you're an able-bodied person, is not, you know, with your car, is not really appropriate. What you should be doing is, is parking up in the new areas where we have, where, where, we, there already exists parking lots along, uh, the fire station and, uh, and access, you know, take the, the two-minute, uh, walk down, down and into the library. I think that's, that's the way you wanna access the library, but thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salvi.
Um, Jim Salvi, seventy-four West Acton Road, speaking just as a resident. You know, I've always thought that bike and pedestrian improvements in this area were very important, if for no other reason than all of the kid attractions in the area, the schools, the library, uh, and the biggest kid magnet of all, Russell's. But that is not what I wanted to, to mention. Um, I just want, I did wanna mention something on behalf of maybe the more experienced cyclists. Um, I don't see much in this plan not to like. The one thing that surprised me was from your aerial view, I didn't see any bike boxes in the intersections. And I've almost become used to those. Bike boxes are those green things with the bike stencils that help cyclists avoid right-turning cars and help them go s- straight or left. I'm guessing it's because you've divided the lanes of travel into right-turning and straight-left. Okay, assuming that's the case, I'd ask you to consider two things, though. Um, number one, if you're a cyclist traveling north on Gleesondale Road, trying to go straight onto Library Hill or make a left, that hill is a killer. And.
Yes, it is.
And you actually identified this issue on, in the issue section on page thirty-one, and good for you. Please consider something on a fairly level part, if it can be done, where a cyclist can rest and get a good head start. It, it causes a lot of conflicts with cars behind us, especially the few manual transmissions that are still out there. Um, the other thing is, and you mentioned it, and you're absolutely right, cars and cyclists traveling eastbound on Great Road seeking to make a left rarely go to the light. Cyclists also make a left on Crescent Street, which leads to several anxious moments when you're just hanging out there in the middle of nowhere with oncoming traffic. And a, a left-turning lane or something would be a, a great thing.
Okay. Can I just react to a couple of things?
Yes, please.
Make it quick, so with the bike boxes, uh, the main reason right now, obviously very early on here, um, what we're showing right now is all the bikes being off the roadway. So they would not, the bike boxes are something that typically, when you have an on-street bike lane, that you come up to, uh, that gets you ahead of the vehicles, they stop behind the box. So we would certainly recommend, uh, an approach where all the bikes would stay off the roadway, and then when they get to the signal, they would just be, their movements would just be controlled through the signal phasing, eliminating conflicts with, um, with, with motorists. Um, and I'm glad you're right, we've, we've mentioned it before, it's been, it's been brought up to me, I've seen it myself, that, that northbound approach, that hill is, is, you know, when you're driving, you just don't recognize, if you ever try to walk it or bike it. So I'm glad you reminded us of that, that is, that is, that is a tough spot. And whatever we can do about that, um, we certainly will, will consider it. And in terms of, uh, depending on how, you know, we elect or choose to phase the signals, it's called, there are things out there, you see them a bit more in the urban areas called lead pedestrian or bike intervals, where if somebody pushes the button, the walk signals come on, um, ahead of the motor vehicle so they can get out in front and get into the intersection. That's typically utilized where you have what's called concurrent phasing, where the vehicles and the pedestrians are going at the same time. A lot of urban areas implement this, because they just have so much demand that if they try to do what I think would work here, and that's an exclusive phase, where somebody pushes a button, whether it be a bicyclist or pedestrian, everybody gets red, the, the bikes and the pads get to walk across, and you could even do like a diagonal from, say, the gas station over to the commons, because you won't have any vehicles conflicting. So, um, there's some things that are, you know, worth thinking about as, as, as this may advance forward, but I appreciate those, those comments.
Thank you.
And it's, it's very important to respond as necessary, I'm just trying to.
Yes.
Let everybody have a chat.
No, I took up a lot of time.
If we still wanna keep at it, well, we can go around again. Mr. Warner online.
Thanks, so my name's Dan Warner and I live at one fifty-two Crescent Street. And I just wanted to address this, I, this point of, if we made sidewalks on Crescent Street, would people use it? One hundred percent they would. To say that, that, um, you know, we shouldn't have sidewalks there because we don't have the populat, population density of Newton, or there haven't been enough fatalities to warrant a sidewalk is just the wrong way to think about it. The people that walk on Crescent Street right now are the people that basically have to. There's a woman that walks up and down for her physical therapy, and somebody else mentioned, there's a, there's a young mother that walks up and down with her family. But for the most part, people don't walk on Crescent Street, because it's dangerous. People fly down that road, my garbage cans have gotten tagged, my mailbox has gotten taken out. You're crazy if you walk up and down Crescent Street. My daughter lives close enough to the school that she could have walked to school, she wanted to walk to school. The bus company had her as a walker, but when they came down and looked at Crescent Street, thanks to the principal, they said, yeah, there's no way a kid can walk on the street, it's way too dangerous. So you can't walk to the library, you can't walk to the school, none of these things are connected. This is right in the center of our town, you know, so, you know, people, there's nothing but young families on this, on this, on this road right now. These kids would be up and down these sidewalks all the time. So that's my two cents, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Standing, you're in the room.
I live at the house, I own the house at Two Crescent, where there's a fairly substantial proposal to change the driveway.
Could you just say your name from the record?
Tim, Tim McDonald, I own the house at Two Crescent Street. I, I, I don't wanna take up everybody's time with concerns about my specific property. So I guess I have a process question, as to where this goes from here. Is this a formal plan that's being presented? How many, uh, further opportunities would there be to get more detailed information? It was a helpful graphic, but I'd have a lot more questions about, you know, that particular proposed change.
Yeah. I don't know how many, but.
Oh, Valerie. Sorry, um, yes, I would say, just to.
Um, yes, I would say just feel free to contact the planning departments. Um, and we can, I'm more than happy to chat with you um about this process. Um, at this point, we're still in the concept phase. Um, we'll be looking at town meeting um in May to be able to advance this just to the twenty-five percent design phase. Um, so we, this is still very early on in the process and a very good time to um to start having these conversations that you can influence a final outcome.
Okay, thank you. So the planning board, which is host here at the town?
Yes.
Upstairs.
Yeah.
And there's some of them right there.
Thanks for standing the whole time.
Okay, back online, Mr. Dan- D'Antonio. Oh, Valerie, did you have something more? Oh, okay.
He's not muted yet.
Thanks for that. Um, yeah, Mark D'Antonio, fifteen Center Place. Uh, appreciate the information being conveyed here. Uh, I just wanted to bring attention to um a series of mailboxes that are between Russell's and Center Place that are effectively on Great Road and how that would be handled uh in this scenario. And as just a comment, uh, I'm a walker. Uh, I walk all over the center of town, appreciate the, the new park that's uh in town. I walk up and down Crescent Street, uh, Hartley Ave and all that. I would definitely be a major advocate for using uh any kind of improvements that it, that occur here. I'm also a cyclist and can appreciate any uh improved uh guidance for uh for, you know, transitioning from Great Road onto Crescent Street. So uh, but primarily question is about the mailboxes. Thank you.
Great.
I don't know, uh, not quite sure. I'll have to take a closer look.
It's a detail.
It's a deal, with simple answers and we will relocate out of the way. But I, I think I know which ones, like a cluster of mailboxes that are, um, I don't know which direction.
Yeah, uh, just a, a bit of further information. Uh, Center Place is a private way.
Okay.
And maybe that complicates the matter. My understanding is that those mailboxes are up, down Great Road. And I believe some residents on Great Road also have mailboxes in that, uh, that bank of mailboxes. So uh, just a point of, uh, point of interest for a resident.
Thank you. Any uh, any hands in the room?
I would love to voice support for the uh raised crosswalks in front of the school. Like table topping that would be awesome because people fly down Crescent. So just voicing support.
Thank you. Uh, online, Mr. Forbes.
Yes, Mark Forbes, White Pond Road. I'm all for this idea, this concept, it seems great. I'm a little concerned about the funding for it. The, when the lower village was done, uh, you know, came in with all kinds of promises of all kinds of grants, eight hundred fifty thousand, we get a little bit more than I believe. But in the end, it cost us three million plus to game out of the taxpayer. Uh, I think we need to have some kind of stops on this. And say, okay, well, we'll do this project if the funding can come in from the state or we have some kind of grants and do it. Uh, we could take it out of the taxpayers' pocket again. I, taxpayers getting killed here in the town in the past few years, it's not getting better. Uh, the, the library, another project that's going on and I'm also in favor for. Uh, but, you know, he, he comes in with eight million dollars, now it's ten million dollars, it was twelve million dollars. And, you know, all of a sudden, we found a couple extra million dollars that may be able to come out of.
Let's stay on topic.
It's all out of town, town poss.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I think, I think what I.
Hold on, but, so we, so we need to, we need to concentrate on getting the funding for this without making promises. This is, project's going to get done no matter what happens. If we can get funding for it and it's guaranteed funding that pays for the whole project, well, like ninety percent of it.
Okay, we got it.
I think it's gonna be great.
That's, that's useful input.
If you can't do that, I don't think this pro- this project should go through.
Point made.
Thank you.
I, I think what I would just add is that um we, we are still early on, so we will be working with our consultants and figuring out grant opportunities. And one thing we've been talking about is finding the project within the project. So how can we break this into smaller chunks um and and work on it over time? But thank you for that comment. I think that with the time that we have remaining, I think we might just take one um or two more comments. I don't want to take too much of the select board's time.
So I'm, I'm very much in favor of what you do, Valerie, you do a great job.
Okay, we have to move on.
Um, I am going to go to Mr. Duclo online because although I see a different person at uh Matt Forrestall. All right, we'll take you in order.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Uh, hi, I'm Kate Forrestall, eighty-seven Kettle Plain Road. We switched out, one of us is putting our daughter to bed.
That's great.
Um, so now I'm here. So to that end, apologies if this was already asked. Did anyone ask a question about the sidewalk between Saint Isidore and Center School yet?
No, no.
Okay, so just, just a question in terms of scope of the project. Um, certainly that, that, that um parking lot at Saint Isidore is used for a lot of overflow parking when there are events at the Center School. Is that something that would be considered in scope in terms of fixing that sidewalk and adding potential, like a street light there? Because it's often dark uh when the events get out and it can be a little bit, a little bit hazardous walking back from the school. So just curious if that was in scope or considered.
The side.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Valerie, please.
Sorry. I'll quickly answer. Um, so the, the westernmost, um, the edge of the scope of work is Packard Road. So it would be included, so we would be looking at the roadway in front of Saint Isidore's.
Right on, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Duclo.
Uh, thank you. Michael Duclo, Three Virchell Road, Stowe. Very interesting and potentially it's expensive project. I think this is some distance in the future. Between then and now, I have two simple, low-cost um suggestions to make as someone who rides a bicycle on the road or their cars. Uh, the first is, the state has passed a four-foot clearance requirement. That is to say automobiles cannot come within four feet. A lot of towns actually have these little signs, motorists give four feet to pass. How about a few of those in important places around town? Very low cost, something can be done immediately. Second is, I think I heard the fact that the travel lane on one seventeen was twelve feet, could be made eleven feet. Let's do that. Let's paint that edge line in a little bit more. It's not a bicycle lane, but psychologically, when you ride on the road, people think you should be in that spot. And if you can be um a little bit wider with that, a little more generous with that, it may actually help slow the cars down too. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Maybe something about the signs. We've actually already ordered those. Um, the state's giving them away, we're just waiting for us to commit.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Wonderful.
Linda.
Linda Hathaway, seventy-six Crescent Street. Only comment, I have many comments, but the one I'll make tonight is the one about where you have pathways that are very close to the hu- other homes. Um, or coming off of Pilot Grove onto Russet and Russet being a private way. And so technically, the people are already trespassing on property that's not there. So encouraging it more is not a, a great thing. Um, I'm all for um protecting the private property rights.
Unless we get an easement because it makes so much sense on a dangerous road.
That's absolutely true.
And I think that's something the town should pursue because it makes so much sense logically.
All right, at this point, I thank everybody for your comments and for your patience and your, and for coming. Um, I'd like to give it a, one last chance to the planning board and then to the select board to make comments and then we're.
Can I comment as a resident?
Can I say something?
Yes.
At the risk of dragging this out forever. Um, as a parent of two children at Hale School, uh, who are also burgeoning runners, who love to run around here and to be, I, we used to live in Alexandria, Virginia, and part of the reason that we moved here was to be able to have, you know, more. Um, and s- and so, um, I have long lamented the sidewalk as a walker, as a runner. Um, and so I am thrilled um that after my decade-plus in town that it is something that we are working on as a town because I feel like there are a lot of people who really um would appreciate this. And so that's all I wanted to say. Thanks, Bernie.
All right.
I'll just say that, um, as Valerie mentioned, so I know it was a lot of information for everyone to take in and sort of hear in one fell swoop. And so we are at the beginning stages. If people have additional comments once they look at the documents and data themselves, um, I, please feel free to send comments or contact the planning office as well.
And all of it's posted, right?
Well, we had it in our packet, so it's, it could be found because of that. Um, do you know, is the planning board website have a copy of all this? Great, so.
Yes, we will make it available through the um, the transportation page under the planning board.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Good to know. Gotcha.
All right.
Boom. To Russet. No.
Well, I'm scared.
Oh.
I don't know.
Reveal.
You know, Russet is a private way that the, that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, thank you all.
And actually right past, when you go past um the entrance to the parking lot, the back parking lot behind the old fire station, you'll see like a line almost in the pavement. That's where the line between town and um the show of regional.
So we don't need any private roads.
Moving along.
Not, it's none of your business.
I just have, um.
Jennifer Henderson.
Yes, a special event permit for um the Stow Town Cleanup. And let's see Jennifer online. Um, welcome Jennifer.
How are you?
Great, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So um, yeah, here, just here to apply for a permit this year for uh, to hold a fifteenth annual Stow Town Cleanup. Um, we're proposing the dates to be April twenty-seventh. Uh, it would operate in the same way as it has in previous years and the same as, as last year. So it would pick up at uh lower common of bags um and safety equipment, uh, like gloves um and vests from eight to twelve. And then um everybody can clean up the entire weekend. And then the highway department would pick up on Monday after um I send them a list of streets that have been cleaned up. Um, we had briefly considered having um something around pulling invasive plants because some residents had asked about that last year and they do it in the town of Harvard. Um, but unfortunately, I think that there's too many um kind of issues around that. We'd need a lot more time to kind of work through that. And so I'm just proposing that we have the te- the cleanup uh without that and keep it the same as we have in previous years.
Sounds great. Um, it's such a great service for the town. I'm personally very appreciative. I can always, you know, see everything sparkle afterwards. Um, so thank you for continuing to, to um make this happen. Um, look to me like the permit application is in order. Um, and as to the invasives, maybe, maybe you can work with the conservation commission for a future year sometime, if you feel like.
Yeah, I should start it after, the conversation after this one because waiting, starting then in January, just never, before you know it.
Yes, yeah.
You know. It's, so.
Um, any questions or comments from the board on this?
Uh, I just had a question about the insurance certificate and whether or not we are waiving it per the motion.
Per the motion?
Well, the motion, so I guess we, we have to decide.
Erin is nodding her head, so I think.
Yeah, whether or not to.
Yeah.
You have the option.
We have the option to waive the requirement of the insurance certificate or not waive it.
Yeah, uh.
But we also are having people sign a waiver, right?
Right, so I think that covers it, right?
Well, let's just double check. I mean, does it?
I'm gonna go to Erin.
Typically, um, each year, and Jennifer, please step in if I'm saying anything that's not right. Um, the past three years that we have waived the insurance certificate for use of town property and each volunteer signs a release form.
The waiver is an indemnification waiver, so it covers this completely.
Yeah, indemnify, defend.
Great.
Yeah, it's pretty detailed.
That's a pretty, so, yeah, okay.
You agree to forever release the town.
That's pretty good, so you start with town cleanup.
Right, yeah.
Well, if there's nothing else, let's go to a vote. All right.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to permit Jennifer Henderson and other volunteers to use the lower common on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, between eight AM and twelve noon to distribute trash collection bags and protective gear for the annual Stow Town Cleanup and to waive the requirement of an insurance certificate. There will be no removal of invasive plants and all participants will need to sign releases that will be returned to the town by April twenty-ninth.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Why wouldn't they sign the release beforehand? Are we gonna chase after them if they don't? So they'll already have done the work on April twenty-seventh?
No, no, it's for them to turn it in. It's not for the people to turn it in.
For me to turn them in to you.
It's for Jennifer to turn them on.
Thank you. That's Roseanne, Roseanna Danson. Okay.
Cool. Thank you so much for spearheading this again. This is great. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yeah, happy to do it.
Well, um, you should be all set, so.
Should we take a?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor? I got derailed. All those in favor?
Uh.
Hi.
Thank you, Jennifer.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Good night.
You're gonna read this entire thing, right?
We have to go over line by line by line. Um, I'll give you a Reader's Digest for a second. How was that?
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready?
No, I did actually read it.
I did as well.
So it wasn't, we'll start with, we'll start with the policy change I take.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So this came about um back, back in, I think it was two thousand fourteen, we came out with a, the time the chief came out with a general order based on the actions of officers um and how they needed to back each other up. Uh, and that turned into, um, really, it was modified uh because what would happen is some officers would make more car stops than the other. And so basically, we should just have a two-person car if you're gonna just make that many car stops. So they're like, well, no, no, every car stop needs two officers. So the other officer, initiating officer can call off the second one. So this has gone on for a while and what happens is we all get attuned to hearing a car, an officer make a car stop on the radio. And then they're initially, initially saying, I'm all set. So this other officer that's working tunes it out, doesn't really pay attention too much. Still has an ear for it, but it's not really uh ingrained in like, okay, I gotta make sure, I gotta pay attention here because they said they were all set. Um, we find that we want to make it more safe for the officers. We want to make, you don't know you're all set until you actually go up, you walk and you know who you're dealing with. Just because you stopped uh at a car that's registered to a Stow resident doesn't mean that it's a Stow resident and you don't know who it is. Uh, a perfect example, two in the morning, Northborough years ago, they stopped a Corvette. Guy writes them a ticket while that Corvette was actually stolen. It wasn't reported yet, so we just, you don't, you never know who you're stopping. So this is a, an opportunity for us just to make it safer uh for the officers. And it's just really a procedural thing that we do on our end. Um, and it gets rid of, we're trying to can, get rid of like the general orders because as time goes on, we have policies. And then we need general orders to sometimes clarify those policies. And we're trying to reduce those because we now have an accreditation team and we are trying to um make, you know, everything streamlined. So this will eliminate one of those general orders, put it into the policy and uh we're gonna go forward from that point on. This is one of many that are coming your way soon in the next few months. So, um.
So general orders are ours?
Huh?
General orders are ours?
No, general orders are mine to, to help explain and to help make sure that we are following the policies correctly.
Ah.
Okay.
Do you, do you want him to do all of them and then we do all the motions?
Do you, do you want him to do all of them, and then we do all the motions at the same time?
Well, that's the only policy.
Um, let's, let's do them. Um, let's, let's vote on this one and then.
Great. Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve the updated five point zero seven traffic enforcement policy as presented by Stow Police Chief Michael Salisi.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous? Next.
Okay, so next, um, I think it was like, what, a month and a half ago, I was in front of you or two months ago for a mutual aid agreement for the Middlesex County. Um, this is a little bit different. This is the Central Middlesex Law Enforcement Council. Across Massachusetts, there are different councils uh, that are available for mutual aid resources. Um, we choose to belong to uh, we call it SEMLAC because of the cost effectiveness, for one thing, and the resources that we get. Um, it is a cost of around three thousand dollars to join this organization that we have been for many years. The other one that's well-known in this area is NEMLAC, which is around five thousand dollars. The difference is also in what um, we have to provide. Uh, one organization requires two dedicated officers uh, to 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 be part of some sort of mutual aid resource. And this one that we do, we don't have to dedicate those officers, although we can, um, it's not a requirement. So this is uh, the chief at the time, Bosworth chose to go this row, and it's a resource that we can use instead of using the state police. Um, so if we didn't use the these, this group, and we needed like the SWAT team, which we didn't need for standoff that we had a couple of years ago. Uh, we called this group of individuals, we would have to call the state police. If we have a bad car accident, for accident reconstruction, we can call them. We don't call, we don't have to call the state police and rely on them coming from everywhere, every which way. So this is just an updated policy that has been in effect for really um, at least twelve, thirteen years now. Um, and we've only had to use them a few times. I know that there's some concern about self-activation and officers and other um, going to other jurisdictions or coming here. What that really means, and I just wanna make sure that we're on, everyone understands. Um, the officers have to be on duty, first of all, to to affect um, any sort of law enforcement in another jurisdiction. An example of how this would be used is if uh, say I was driving from Marlboro Road, and I went on Lower Main Street in Hudson, and I was coming back up Sudbury Road, so I'm making the loop. And then there was a drunk driver in front of me. I could actually uh, make that motor vehicle stop and then call Hudson, and then we could deal with it appropriately. Uh, otherwise, I'd have to be just a witness and call Hudson and say, I have this in front of me, and there's a whole different procedure I could, it's just quicker steps for us to take uh, public safety action. Uh, this doesn't mean we're going to other towns to um, enforce their policies, their laws, and we we're dealing, everyone's dealing with their own stuff. It's just our ability to help and for other communities to help us when we ask it for. And we 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 remain in control of everything that happens in Stow, which is important, which means you guys are being in control of everything that happens with the police department.
It's a nice theory.
So you can still go into the, follow a speeder into another town?
Yes, it depends. But yes, no, I mean, we could follow speeder, and like, there's different ways that we get our authority from. I mean, there's fresh and continued pursuit, which doesn't actually mean that you're in a high-speed pursuit or anything. It just means if you have an arrestable criminal offense in your presence in your town, that you can follow that person into another town, and then you can continue what you're doing. You can make a a jurisdictional arrest for a felony. Uh, and you can still do a citizen's arrest as a police officer and still have the same probable cause standard that you would have within the town. This is um, so you still have those different avenues. This just helps us, and it also gives us all those resources that we can use too. And I think they have many different um, like committees and segments and stuff. And we, like I said, we use them. We've used them a few times. We used them for accident reconstruction, and we've used them for the SWAT team.
That's great.
Didn't we still have state SWAT respond?
Oh, yeah, uh, we still have, well, they didn't respond to that.
Okay.
No, that was SEMLAC who responded. We called them up.
But state, you still have access to state.
We still have access to the state police if we need it.
Okay.
But they all work together too, so. And if you need more than one, then you call state, you call the, you call NEMLAC, and everybody, we all, we all try to work together and help each other out. Again, this has been going on for twelve, thirteen years or something. I'd have to look at the exact date.
Cool.
Any other questions?
I, I just wanted to say, I I did have some concerns about this, and actually, we spoke this afternoon, and because I was concerned that police officers from other municipalities could come in here and you're a police chief that I think, I was gonna say has certain standards. I mean, maybe that's the right thing. Policies is perhaps the best way. And in fact, it says here in five point eight that nothing in this section authorizes a police officer or a department to patrol or otherwise provide police service in another jurisdiction against established practices or policies of the chief of police of that municipality. So it does set, it's a bit of a check and balance, in my opinion.
Oh, absolutely.
So that was my concern, that things these days tend to go rogue. And I was concerned that this could contribute to rogueness, but I felt comfortable after our conversation today, so. I just sort of wanted that in the record, that there's a bit of check and balance in here, that we're not just giving away
Right.
undue authority.
Oh, I know, absolutely. And, you know, and again, it's only um, it's only those that are on duty. It's not off-duty officers. There are some policies out there in the world that like, officers can self-activate. We don't have those. So like, for this, they can't be, you know, the, one of the eighty towns and being like, you know, I'm gonna go run radar or on Main Street and Webster.
Yes.
It's not, it doesn't, it's.
So the term self-activate in here is a different use of the term self-activate? Because it says in here, that was the part that triggered me at first.
So you can self-activate, like if they're on duty.
Yeah.
And they, and they see a violation in another jurisdiction that they're in, they can act upon it.
In here, in this language?
Yes.
But they have to already be on duty.
They have to already be on duty.
Right, and they have to check in, like you, your example of the drunk driver, you would, you couldn't just go in there and
Correct.
Arrest him. You'd have to bring him to Hudson.
So, right, we'd have to go to Hudson. We'd have to actually go through their court system. We'd have to, I, I'm I'm gonna see, nine, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, like, this is not something that we're gonna be doing for mutual, like, like how we act.
I know.
Stow, Stow officers are responsible for the town of Stow.
Yeah.
Um.
Right.
That's essentially, that is what we're doing. We're sent, we're, we're not patrolling other towns. I mean, if Hudson came in and started patrolling Hudson, I mean, could, you know, would you want to pay me? I mean, you probably wanna start, you know. You know, you're not getting your money's worth out of us, but um, it's not how it works.
Yeah, because it did say both mutual aid request and self-activation situations, but I see this as someone who's on duty, who ha, isn't just waking up and deciding to be.
Cop for a day and stuff.
Cop for a day in downtown, whatever. Okay.
No, no, you can't, no. And you're right, correct. We're not just waking up. We're not going to, we're not just like, I'm gonna uh, you know, I'm gonna go patrol another town today. That's, you know, they don't have the authority to do that. Um. That being said, there are limited times where they're a part of groups or investigations that you have to leave town, you know? Criminals, Stow, Stow crime doesn't say it's Stow suspects, so we have to go somewhere else. We have to go look for these individuals. We have to work with these other towns.
Right. As long as there's the working with, and as long as there's that language with respect to the public, jurisdictions, police chiefs' policies. That was my concern, is that I saw the self-activate, and then I saw the other language, and that's why
Yep.
I wanted to talk to you, because it got a little triggering. All done, all set for me.
Interesting.
Thank you for that. That's actually a very, a nice nuance that you pulled out to.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I can speak from the other side of this. Were years back when I was in law enforcement, and this did not exist. It was an absolute nightmare before any of this was put on record.
I think this is, on the face of it, very, very valuable. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not just on the face of it. This, and the language and the way that it is set forth, and the way that it's described. I can tell you, before this stuff existed, you would get people who were not on duty jumping in. And it was the wild, wild west, so.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a vote.
All right. Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve and sign the SEMLAC Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council Mutual Aid Agreement as presented by Stow Police Chief Michael Salisi.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I'll ask my question tomorrow night.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna be there with my final.
Yeah, it's the next, uh.
We're doing the uh, the Citizens Academy tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we're excited about that, so. Um, I am, I'm, I'm teaching it. Kelly and I, you got Kelly and I, you got Kelly and I tomorrow night. So the next thing is, so, yeah, in two thousand and twenty-one, the state now is a post-state uh, peace officer standards and training, and what happens is we have to be certified to be a police officer. And everybody that's, who is a police, existing police officer was automatically certified. And people from A through H, their certification expired in in the first year.
That's what that was.
And then H through I
Got it.
Was the next year, and my year is now, this year coming up. And so there's a couple of things that I have to do and other officers have to do, and what the other officers with earlier alphabet uh, last names had to do. One of them is um, I have, you have to attest that uh, as the language says, that uh, it's your knowledge that uh, I am a good moral character and fit for employment in law enforcement. And the best of my knowledge, the agency has provided posts with all required discipline and complaint reports related, relative to, relative to me. Uh, this is the same thing that I have to do with the officers. I'm not exempt from any of this. I have to have the same certification. I have to have the same rules and regulations that all the officers have to have. So this is one of three steps to become recertified. One of three things that I have to report. There are many things I have to do to maintain my certification. Um, there is a questionnaire that I have to file, and then there's a questionnaire that I have to review, and I I believe it's just with Denise. This usually happens like with the officers, and all these questions are online too, like, this is not something we're hiding. But all these officers have that interview with me, you know, did your taxes, you know, have you maintained all your training? Those are some of the questions, and we, we make sure that every single year in this state won't recertify us if we don't have that stuff. I'm an S. This is what happens. This will be good for the next three years, and that's all that this is. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy.
Who's is that?
I don't know, but it's not mine. Mine's unsilent.
What happened?
Nothing. Someone's been buzzing all evening.
Okay.
I had a text being going on over on my phone.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
You will get recertified.
So.
And so this is something that that uh.
If you don't sign this, I don't get recertified.
Oh, I'll sign.
So I'll tell you right.
And we do this for you, but you do this for your.
Correct, because.
I thought you were gonna.
Yes, you do this for me.
Yes, you do this for, yeah, right, on tape length.
Yeah, yes.
I just thought it would be a great idea to throw that out there.
Um, you do this for me, but I do this for the officers.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Just a procedural question. Courtney is the only one that needs to sign this, right?
From what I understand.
Yes.
But we need to vote on it as a board, but she's the.
She should, you should vote. Is the board.
Do we need to change the motion to say?
Oh, and to have Courtney sign it? Sure.
Yeah.
Sign.
Have you, you can have the chair.
Well, that's, I mean.
She's the chair. That's what she's supposed to do.
Signing, you know, somebody's gonna sign it. You could say.
I just thought the motion was.
It says, I move to approve and sign, so I'll just, I'll just have have Courtney sign.
Um, I'm ready for that motion.
Great. Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve and have Courtney Freshen, sign the post attestation for Police Chief Michael Salisi.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Last one.
Desks.
The desk, so.
This is great.
You have very, I like the pictures.
As you know, that our, our, our building was built in nineteen ninety-six, and we've been in there, and since ninety-seven, we've been in that building. Um, the furniture has been the same, uh, nothing's changed. Uh, the desk, the additional desk that we have have come from donations from schools, uh, and they are the old, you know, metal teacher desk. Um, sometimes people break uh, like keys off into locks, and um, so like, one of the drawers in one of the, in the three drawers that are on the desk, well, we couldn't get into it, so we got into it. And it's just, it's old, it's worn out, and what we ended up doing was, because we know that the Bose is closing the facility or doing whatever with it, we thought that was an opportunity to reach out and say, hey, listen, you guys have great stuff over there. Is there any chance you would wanna donate some, some furniture? And like, we have a whole division on this. We can come in, we'll look at it. We went through a couple of different renderances of like, what would fit in the space. This is gonna be for the most, the majority of the patrol officers, because they have a common area that they use. They came, uh, Bose came in, they looked at it, they said, this is what we can do for you, and we're more than happy to donate. And it's quite a bit, because
Yeah.
It was like, I think it's like fifteen thousand dollars, almost fifteen thousand dollars worth of equipment. And you can see from the photos.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we provide you the photos of what's gonna be replaced. I mean, look, I mean, that's where we got into the drawer. Um, and it'll, organization will be better, and it's, I think, four officers, four or five officers that share that, plus our jail diversion clinician is also in that room too. So it'll be, it'll be better. And the plan is, if you approve, um, to clear everything out uh, this, this week. Uh, Dave Gogan, one of the sergeants who does all the painting at the police station, will come in, paint it, get it, cause uh, the inside of that room. Um, and then they'll come in next week, and they'll put everything in, Bose will come in and put everything in, and we've talked to the highway, and they're gonna all of the uh, the stuff that's in there is really not usable, like to to sell on municipal bids or anything. It's all metal too, so go right into the metal dumpster, which gets recycled and.
Right.
So.
That's great.
All right.
Ready for a motion?
Sure. Uh, Madam Chair, I move to accept the donation from Bose.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's him.
Run!
That was fine, that was fine.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
For waiting around or not.
Yeah, no, no problem.
You didn't.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
You too, thank you. What do we have left? Surplus tires.
Do you want to just?
I can do the motion.
We can just vote on that, sure.
We can just vote on it. Anybody have any questions?
No, sounds like a good idea.
Well, let's just say that there are eighteen used tires that the Stow Police Department have deemed surplus, and so they are under the value of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
So they are being, what are they doing? Disposed of.
Being properly disposed of.
They're being just properly disposed of.
Well, so that they can get the best price for them, so that, so they're not going in the trash.
Right.
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 So our only purpose here is to deem them surplus, so they can do that.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Ready? Madam Chair, I move to declare the tires presented on the list as surplus and to authorize the disposal of these items.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And um, let's see, meeting minutes. Um, there's one matter to clear up. There was a um, a request by Ms. Woods to uh, reexamine, oh man, um, the, the um, I had a note. To reexamine the um, the, the part of our minutes which, which describes her comments. Um, the, sort of the long and the short of it that I can see is that the captioning on our, on our recording misinterpreted her words. And so basically, she was saying that um, she felt the, the uh, the, the library plan as it currently stands is no longer consistent with the original vote at town meeting. And so I would like Joyce to, um, I can give her my note when I find it, or we'll discuss with her later. I would like the, the minutes to not, so there's word misinformation in there. Um, and it, it's not appropriate. It came from the captioning on the, and it was just, it, you know, we listened to the tape, and it sounded like that's what she said, but um, it was an error, so. Um, that paragraph, that um, second paragraph of public comment, where the first paragraph, Debwood spoke. Um, should get rewritten.
I agree.
I wasn't here, so I'm gonna abstain from the minutes.
Anybody else?
So you listened to the tape?
I did.
Yeah.
I, I, um, just before the meeting, I, I, um, watched the recording and I. Slowed it down and I took notes and, um, so the captioning says misinformation. But she is saying this information and, um.
So we just need to change misinformation to disinformation.
I don't think this, this is well-written sentence and I'd like to have another. I'd like it to be interpreted better, you know, basically it needs to say. Ms. Woods doesn't feel that the library project that's being presented right now is any longer serves the, uh. Original, um.
Design that was.
Design that was presented at town meeting and she would like it to be, um, to go back to town meeting. That's her comment.
So, I don't have a problem with that, except that. I guess I would like to see the real words that are in your missing note, to know what we're actually signing.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem changing this if, if what you indicate is true.
Let's see, try one more time.
Do you want to?
I think we can table.
Just move to table the minutes till the next meeting then?
Let's do that.
Why don't we do that?
Okay, we'll do that.
Can we make a note of that too?
Cause otherwise this is, I, I thought this was, I mean.
Yeah, I love this as minutes, I think this was just a unfortunate.
Yeah.
Let's just table it.
Okay.
Um, I, oh, sorry, are we on correspondence?
Um, we need to vote on that.
We're gonna table them though, right?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, correspondence.
Yeah, so I just had one thing, I, um, somebody had reached out to me and I. I know we put it in the minute, sorry, about the inaccessible, Greg Troxel had reached out about. Um, so I just wanna, we can either discuss it on a future agenda if it's warranted.
Discuss it now, but we can put it out.
Just talk about, put it on a future agenda, sorry. Yes, we're not going to talk about it, um, I don't care, one way or the other, I just, I'm putting it out there, cause it came to my email. So I just wanted to, to put it out there for everybody.
I saw it too and I spoke briefly to, to, um, Denise, this is an extension of, of his previous. Um, request that we make, um, better accessibility, um, via alt text on.
Oh.
Um, images on the website, I think. So, um, I did a little coding years ago, so I have just enough knowledge to get in trouble with.
I'm with you.
It's not, apparently, um. Part of the trouble is that you get to, well, like, if you use it, so what he's concerned about is if you use a flyer. Instead of putting all that text into your website.
Right.
It's not accessible to people that are, um, visual, visually impaired.
Like if you're using a screen reader, it's not gonna, it's gonna read it as an image and not with the text, so.
Right. So, um, I did a little research, I think we might want it on a future agenda.
Okay.
Um, so let's make a note of that, it's something that, it's not gonna, I don't. I don't know if there's, there's a quick fix, so there needs to be some, uh, better understanding of the technology. Hector.
Uh, with all the letters and the article in the Stowe Independent and the Woods comments about the library, um. I'd like to know. I think this should be something that's put on a future agenda to review what's going on with the library and. What we can do.
Um, how about we get Tina to come in and give us an update on the project?
I mean, I think the, the. The thing that I think that we all need to keep in mind is that the town voted at town meeting for this. So there's not a board of five people that's gonna like overturn the library.
There's not.
That's gonna, if that is a route that somebody wants to go down, that is a bigger thing than the five of us here. Um, so I think we need to be very careful about how we discuss this as a board, because. It was a vote at town meeting.
More than one vote.
More than one vote at town meeting, so.
And a general election.
And a general election, right, so.
So there's a lot of people behind that decision and there's money that has been earmarked and.
Annulated and.
And the committee has gone back to the drawing board and back to the drawing board, bless them, and they've come up with something. That is, um, that I think the, I mean, it's the, it's the library director, she's part of that, so.
But it's not what the town voted for.
Okay. So we're gonna stop discussing it now, let's put it on a future agenda, all done.
But again, that's a bigger.
Yeah.
Well, what, can I just, why do we need to get away from it?
Um, we can't have a discussion that's not on the agenda.
Oh, right now.
This is on the agenda right now.
Madam Chair, we should not be discussing this now, it wants to be put on an agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so the question originally arose was, should we put it on the agenda, isn't that what you were asking?
Yeah.
And I, yes.
And you're saying have Tina come in and.
I, I think that would be, um. Would be on the agenda and we could ask her questions and we could probably talk about it more than.
And I think we should talk about process.
Thank you.
That's the other part, yes, that we need to discuss the process, what options are there?
Okay. Alright.
So maybe we'll ask that Denise can clarify, um. What happens after several town meeting votes and, you know, re. Uh, visitation of plans and, um, who gets to decide whether that's good enough.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, um.
Is anybody else concerned about the FiOS TV game?
No.
Anybody interested in going to the ribbon cutting at Fourth Mill?
I will be there, I will be there as a Middlesex West member, a commerce member.
I would love to, but I will be in Key West.
Oh, cool.
I would love to, but I'll be in Key West, so.
Yeah.
Half-life.
I know. I'll suffer through.
Do, do you want the last motion or are we still talking? Uh, Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.